Welcome, Ken.
Hi.
All right, and welcome everyone to the March 11th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, this public meeting of the Falmouth zoning board of appeals shall be physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures in place to ensure public participation. The meeting is being televised via Falmouth Community Television. And real time public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. For the Zoom login instructions, you can go to www.falmouthma.gov/zba. And I'm noticing where unless the recording button is in the new spot, I don't see it rolling right now. So I'm not sure if we're live. Justin or Adriana, can you confirm that?
Just confirmed TJ.
Awesome. All right. So we are live.
Yes, we are.
All right. Fantastic. And again, for the Zoom login instructions, you can go to www.falmouthma.gov/zba. I'll introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Hurry. I'm the chair of the board. Ken Foreman is the board's vice chairman. Bob Dugan is the clerk. Ed Van Kuren is a full voting member. Scott Zalinski is a full voting member as well. Mary Berry is an associate member and James Morris is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator. Ashley DeMello is our recording secretary for the night. And a big thank you as always to the Falmouth IT department represented by Justin Shanahan and Adriana Pantano and our friends at FCTV who are helping us broadcast live tonight. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and the board considers requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and from the public and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the files such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation and time may be extended by vote of the board. Board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should be directed only at the project itself and we also ask you to please refrain from any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized and the way we are handling public comment is through the Zoom app. Again, for the Zoom login instructions, you can go to www.falmouthma.gov/zba. At the appropriate time in the night when it does come to public comment, I'll ask you to click the raised hand icon using the Zoom app. Once you are elevated, we typically give two minutes per person and we ask you to state your name and address for the record. As for closing or continuing the hearing, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. And the alternative, the board may continue the hearing to a future date in time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. Such a motion would include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to our agenda for the night, we have two continuations for new public hearings and a few items on our open meeting agenda. First up is public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if anyone out there has anything to mention that is not on the agenda, go ahead and click the raised hand icon and we can elevate you in a minute. All right, not seeing anyone, so we can go to our continuations. Up first, we have the continuation of application 78-20 Street 50 Quimby Lane in East Falmouth. An appeal from the building commissioner's determination. And Noreen, I believe there's the withdrawal that's still on the table.
Yes, so the applicant did request a withdrawal. And just as a reminder to the board, the hearing was actually not opened. So my recommendation is to vote the withdrawal.
Thank you, Noreen.
I just have one question. It's not about allowing the withdrawal or not. The question is that I actually had read it into the record at the last meeting when I reviewed it. So does that make a difference at all on how we have to do the vote?
Nope.
Okay.
All right. Oh, Scott, I think it looks like you're trying to talk, but you're muted.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Chairman, or do you need to open it before you get a motion?
I think we would just need a motion at this point.
I'll make the motion as requested.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Scott and seconded by Ken. Roll call vote of the full voting members. Scott.
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Bob.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken.
Ken Foreman, aye.
Ed.
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Thank you, Ed, and TJ Hurry, aye. So the request for withdrawal is allowed unanimously. All right, up next, we have the continuation of application 59-20 Kelly 165 Acapescot Road in East Falmouth. And the voting members on this application are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Zalinski. If we could elevate Mr. Kelly, I think he's Jim. Jim in the attendees list, I'm pretty sure that's him. Mr. Kelly, if you could hit the raised hand icon just to help out IT. All right, Mr. Kelly, we have you elevated, but you're currently muted. So you'll have to turn on your video and your microphone.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, let me see if I can get the camera rolling here.
Very good.
I'm not having much luck with the camera.
Well, that's new. Not to worry. Excuse me. Let's see. Has a camera with an X through it. I've never seen that before.
It says it's on, but I'm not seeing anything either.
Yeah. All right, well, if you can't get the video going, we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay. I've provided the board with revised plot plan and plans of the project. The plot plan, as requested last time, shows the AC unit beside the stairs. I don't know if you can pick that out on your copy of the pen, but it's, there's a set of stairs goes right beside the deck that go down. And just to the right of that is the AC unit. That was not on the plan last time. You folks able to see that?
Oh, yeah, we all have a pretty decent sized physical copy of, yeah, we can see the AC unit.
Then on the project plans, page A1, on the lower drawing on page A1, I showed the rent station, the location of that. That's on the back wall of the garage. On A2, that shows the mudroom, that shows the, well, I think this is already updated last time, the four foot cased opening on the office, which is the bottom right hand drawing. On page S1, the basement of the mudroom shows full basement. And on S2, it shows a cross section of that full basement coming out of the garage. And those are the updates that we put on the, on the plans.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other updates?
No, that's, that's all I've got here.
Sounds good. So if you're all set, we can turn it over to board questions and go from there. All right, let's see. Mary, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Mary. James?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, James. Scott?
No, thank you.
All right, Bob?
No, just confirmation that that other landing was removed.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I'm sorry, just confirmation that that other landing has been removed now.
The landing on the existing deck has been removed and dismantled. It's currently in the trailer. I just had my trailer hitch put on the new vehicle. So that'll be heading to the dump this weekend.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob. Ken?
I'll just confirm because I went out there yesterday and all the stairs, landings, et cetera, were all out of there. Side look clean.
Very good. Ed?
No questions.
All right, thank you, Ed. And no questions from me. We'll turn it to public comment. If there's any question, comment, concern regarding this project from anyone out there, go ahead and click the raised hand icon and we will get to you in a minute. Okay, not seeing anyone, so back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, make motion to close.
All right, thank you, Scott. Is there a second? Thank you, Ed. Motion to close made by Scott and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote. Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ed.
Ken Foreman, aye.
Thank you, Ken. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So the hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. And what would be the board's pleasure for the project?
Make a motion to approve with conditions.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. All right, moving on to findings.
Bob, a little help with the paperwork there?
Bob, you're muted.
Do we need a roll call vote after the, after the motions? Don't you usually do a roll call vote?
Roll call, roll call vote to close, but then for the...
I made a motion to approve with conditions and Ed seconded it. We have to roll call vote that, don't we?
At the end.
Right.
I guess so for, for findings, we should make a finding that there was an administrative approval. It was recorded for the changes that Mr. Kelly mentioned this evening. This is for interior finish only on the, above the garage. Septic. Yeah, one bedroom has been removed from the house by changing within open casing to an office, which allows the bedroom to be used over the garage, three bedroom maximum.
Septic upgrade provided, a plan provided.
All right, anything else for findings?
Bob, did you want to put in that that landing was removed?
Yeah, I'll put in line that the testimony was that the landing's been removed and he's going to be hauling off to the dump.
Received updated plans showing rent station and other requested items from last meeting? Is that appropriate?
Yep, that's fine.
Sure.
Also put to the applicant, testimony was the living space above the garage is to be used as a single family dwelling. He's not proposing it as an accessory apartment or a separate living unit. He did state that there would not be cooking facilities. We should put a finding in that the space above the garage does exceed the space allowed under the bylaws to be used as an accessory apartment. Put a finding in that the driveway that was originally proposed to be gravel was subsequently paved. And the driveway permit has been closed. Then 240-216 and 240-23G1.
Wasn't there a statement in there about indirect lighting?
There was a statement that he added, he changed bulbs on the back on two lights behind the house, but I don't think it's indirect lighting. I think maybe the bulbs might have just been bright.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if you want to put, if you want to condition dark sky compliant lighting or...
I don't.
All right, anything else for findings?
I don't know if we already put it, but basically this is a modification of the special permit.
Right.
They can add, they can add the findings from the previous meeting, but we've taken care of that about the, Noreen could just put something in that the, originally there was changes at the building department and that they did straighten all that out.
Sure. All right, if that does it for findings, conditions?
For plans, garage, the garage plus the dwelling will be limited to a number of three bedrooms to be in compliance to the Board of Health Title V Septic. Premises is strictly prohibited as a single family dwelling use. No accessory apartment, separate living unit, or cooking in the space above the garage is allowed. Construction vehicles and materials should be maintained within the premises and not park on the roadways.
Well, the construction's done though, right?
Well, I mean, I don't know what, he hasn't filtered out, so I don't know what.
They're, it's, they're gonna finish it off.
Oh, yeah, all right, all right. Delivery vehicles.
You know, we were putting in before regarding, we were putting in before regarding the assessor being invited in, but I don't think we're doing that anymore. Is that correct, Noreen?
That's correct. And right now, they're not going to properties anyway with COVID, so.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to apply the same building hours as we do on regular build outs?
I'd say that's a good idea.
Well, I guess I, what I would say to you, not to interrupt, but this is interior work only. And so where you're having interior work done, the, you know, intent of construction hours is not to impose on neighbors. But yes, I would advocate to you that where it's interior work only, that the hours would not be of any impact to neighbors.
Thank you, Noreen. What she said, Mr. Chairman?
Very good, Scott. Thank you. All right, anything else for conditions?
Noreen, was there anything in the referrals? I mean, there's, there's three files here now that you know need to be put in here. Was there any upgrade from water or?
Yeah, I think everything was taken care of as far as I can recollect.
All right, so anything else for conditions?
We, we did put that, that, I know we put it as a finding, but I guess as a condition too, that that bedroom on the second floor of the main house will be changed to a four foot cased opening so that it lacked privacy. And will be used as an office only.
All right, thank you, Bob. All right, anything else for conditions? All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Scott and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote once again. Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Got it. Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Kelly, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, folks. Good night.
Good night. All right, moving on to our new public hearings. Up first, we have application 5-21 Roche Trustee, 200 Mill Road in Falmouth. And I believe Attorney Clower is representing the applicant on this. If he could be elevated while Bob reads everything into the record, please.
So application number 005-21, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Mass General Laws, you hereby notify the Kathleen G. Roche trustee of Falmouth, Mass. Is applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3C of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the attached garage, adding living space above and construct a porch addition to the dwelling on subject property known as 200 Mill Road, Falmouth, Mass. For referrals from Scott McGann with Health, a three bedroom septic system was installed in 2011. The plans indicate the house will remain at three bedrooms with the relocation of one of the existing three bedrooms. So Health has no issues with the project. Conservation Commission voted to approve the project under a negative determination, RDA, and they attached the, the permit. From engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Mill Road is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters of public rights of way. Four, a dry well is proposed for the garage roof. Five, we recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 991, affixing of legible numbers required, time limit for compliance. And six, where this project falls in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, we defer to the commission for stormwater management and construction erosion controls. Given the work to be done in the location, there doesn't appear to be potential impacts to the town right of way or town property. Planning, no comment. From Water Department, the existing water service in Maine must be shown on the plans. The existing home has a one inch service fed from a six inch main in Mill Road. Fire Department has no issues with the project as drawn. And accessories, no comment.
Hey, thank you, Bob. And the voting numbers on this project are the regular voting numbers. And Attorney Clower for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicant Kathleen Roche, the owner of 200 Mill Road. We're here tonight seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling at this site. 200 Mill Road is located at the northern end of, of Mill Road, between Sitters Pond to the northeast and Salt Pond to the southwest. It's just slightly over half an acre at 22,653 square feet. And it's located in a residential C zoning district. I have to begin by apologizing, which is never a great way to start a hearing. In preparation for the hearing this week, we realized that there was an error when we submitted the revised plans a few weeks ago. A change that was, or something that was noted on the initial plans that were submitted did not carry over onto the revised plans, which we submitted about three weeks ago. As soon as this error was realized, we did submit corrected plans. And essentially, the only, the only change was we, we proposed to eliminate an existing bedroom in the main portion of the house. And when we revised the plans to reflect some changes, that somehow got left off. So we submitted the corrected plan showing that bedroom being eliminated. Again, I know that this came in late. My apologies. My hope is that this does not change, this change is not viewed as too significant. It doesn't affect the board's view of the project in a negative manner. But I do want to just note that I'm cognizant of the fact those plans came in late and I apologize. Presently at the site, there's a three bedroom, single family dwelling. The lot coverage by structure there is twelve point eight percent, which is well below the twenty percent allowed by right. It's non-conforming only to the setback to three foot contours of, three foot contour of tidal waters of Vineyard Sound. It's forty one point nine feet where fifty feet is required. Otherwise, it's conforming to lot coverage requirements and setbacks. The applicant's proposing renovations, which will significantly improve the usefulness of the property. Specifically, they proposed to raise and rebuild the garage and to add living space above. And in connection with this, eliminate an existing bedroom. Ms. Roche, Ms. Roche rather, has an adult daughter with special needs. Her daughter lives with her and will always live with her. The addition of the living space above the garage is intended to provide that daughter with some autonomy while still living within the house. This space does not have a dedicated entrance and there's no additional facilities proposed beyond the bedroom and the bathroom in that area. This requires a special permit under section two forty three C of the zoning bylaw, which states that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of two forty to sixteen and whether or not those changes, alterations create a new dimensional non-conformity, impair views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. In this case, we have no new dimensional non-conformity created. The existing non-conforming setback is unchanged, unaffected. This is a private, well-wooded lot. There's no impact on, on views and vistas, and it's certainly in line with the other houses in the area. As I mentioned, this project represents a significant improvement for the applicant and allows for spreading out of the living space while maintaining the existing footprint. It allows autonomy and independence for Ms. Roche's daughter. And there's no question that'll be substantially more useful to the applicant. This will not create any new dimensional non-conformities and it meets the standards of two forty three C and two forty two sixteen. I believe that this board can, should grant the special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Turn it to board questions. Everyone got rearranged again. James, you want to start us off?
No question.
In the hot seat?
No, thank you.
All due questions. Scott?
Just one, Attorney Clower, on the cut sheet of this, on the rendering, it shows a fireplace and a connection between the existing house and the new second floor addition. Is that a walkthrough or does that, how does that, is that storage space or what is that?
So, there is, there, if I can share my plan quickly, I think it might be helpful.
Go right ahead.
I believe you're referring to this area right here where my Moses, Scott?
Well, that's, that's first floor, correct?
Yes, that's first floor.
All right, I'm looking at the rendering, looking at it, it's in its entirety on the first page. And there is a, where the slope of the roof comes down on the, on the main body of the house. Right, hit ya up? If you look at the, the chimney?
Yep.
Straight down from there, there's a connection with an eve between the second story of the new addition and what appears to be attic space or what in the main body of the house. What, what is that?
Looking at the plans, I don't, I don't think there's any sort of substantial connection there. It doesn't really show any access to that area from, from the house, from, from the apart, you know, the, the, the space above the garage to, to the, the main house, because there's no second floor on the main portion of the house.
Right, so that's for static, so grain it off the roof probably?
I would think so.
All right. All right, that's all I have. I'd like to reserve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Bob, anything?
What's the height of the second floor now above the garage? The ridge height?
The ridge height, the existing ridge height is twenty feet, five inches. The proposed ridge height is twenty six feet, four inches.
That's my other question.
All right, thank you, Bob. Ken?
So the, the deck, second floor deck overhangs. And I just was wondering what the, does that distance affect distance to the three foot contour?
It does not. It's exactly the same distance as the existing setback.
Okay. Good, thanks.
All right, Ed?
No questions. Looks pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Ed. Mary?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. Attorney Clower, what's the, what's the existing height of the home itself excluding the garage?
Sure, it's twenty feet, five inches.
Okay. And then you said the proposed is going to be proposed garage is going to be twenty six?
Four, four point two five, if we're going to be exact.
Four point two five, all right. And the bathroom proposed, is, is that a full bath? Is, is that a shower or a full bath proposed?
I believe it's a shower. It is a full bath. As I mentioned, this would be the primary living space for Ms. Roche's daughter.
Very good. That does it for me. Let's see if there's any public comment, any question, comment, or concern regarding this project out there. Go ahead and click the raised hand icon. And we will get you elevated in a moment. Okay, not seeing anyone out there. Back to the board. Any follow-up questions for Attorney Clower? All right, seeing none. Do we have everything we need?
Motion to close.
Ken, you were, sorry, Scott, Ken, I just want to make sure you were-
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking through the plans and I, is there a sheet that has the first floor? Is there a change in the bedroom count?
I know, the, the bedroom color remained the same. If you look at page, bear with me. What just happened to my plans? If you look at page A one point one, one of the existing bedrooms is, is being eliminated. They're, they're taking out, if you look at the, oh, I suppose if you look at A, A oh point three, which is page four, it shows an existing bedroom with a closet. They're relocating that door, making it a four foot case opening and eliminating the closet.
Which bedroom number are you talking about?
It's bedroom, bedroom one.
Yeah, unless I'm crazy, A one one on my plan set looks the same as A oh three.
That might be the product of the, the mistake we had with the plans earlier this week, where we did submit the revised plans.
Okay. That, that was the source.
I'd be happy to show mine, Mr. Foreman, if you'd like, just so that-
You know, why don't you just do that for the record, because this is what I've got to go on.
So, I almost left the meeting. That would not be-
Yeah, that was confusing.
So if you look right here, this is page A one point one.
Yeah.
This shows the relocation of the door and the elimination of the-
So you, you not only, it may case the opening, but you got rid of the closet?
Correct.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, anything else from the board?
I just one question on the, on the water service. Did they ever upgrade to show that on the plan?
We did submit a revised plan, but as I'm looking at it, I don't see the water. No, there's a, there is, there's a gas gate.
I didn't see it, but I don't know if I was missing it.
Sure, and I'm happy, would be happy to, to submit a revised plan. Board would be willing to move forward, would be happy to submit a revised plan as part of a condition.
All right, anything else? All right, Scott, you were going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
Fantastic.
Second.
Thank you, Ed. All right, so motion to close made by Scott and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
And Forman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kier, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zolinski, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. So it passes unanimously. The hearing is closed. How would we like to proceed?
So motion approved with conditions?
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Thank you, Ken. All right, Bob, you want to start us off with findings?
Yeah, so two forty dash three C, two forty dash two sixteen, not substantially more detrimental. The existing footprint is twenty eight fifty-two, proposed is twenty nine four forty-two. No, four twenty, wait a second. Yeah, the existing footprint is twenty eight fifty-two, the proposed is twenty nine forty-two. They're doing a raise of the existing garage and rebuilding over the garage, adding living space above for applicant's daughter. Lot coverage by structures only twelve point eight percent. The only non-conformity is the setback to the four foot contour, which is forty one point nine feet, and that's the waters of Vineyard Sound where fifty feet is required. They are eliminating a bedroom in the main home with a four foot case opening and removal of a closet. And that's allowing the new bedroom to be put above the garage. Maximum bedrooms will be three. They did get an approval under negative determination, RDA from Conservation. Height to the new addition on the garage ridge is twenty six point four two five. Height of the main is twenty point five. So I like it.
All right, thank you, Bob. Anything else for findings?
Applicant has offered to add the water line onto the plan.
Thank you, Norine. I was just about to bring that one up. All right, how about conditions?
Per plans, per revised plan.
Those revised plans, are they with us now or are they to be updated?
Well, the only updated one is the water line, so I guess we could just say the revised plan to include the water line as requested by the Water Department.
Okay.
Limited to three bedrooms per septic. Condition on the elimination of, of one of the bedrooms in the main home is shown on the plan to allow the third bedroom to be above the garage. We want to condition it, Norine, on the, I guess Conservation is going to handle the sediment erosion controls as part of their RDA, so we can list that in. I don't think there was anything extra on engineering. Still to check.
They had downwell, they had downspout drainage too, didn't they?
Yeah, dry well for the proposed garage roof.
Not shown on the plan.
Yeah, we also want to condition section ninety nine one, affixing of legible numbers and time limit for compliance.
Building dates and hours of construction.
Keeping building materials and vehicles on property.
All right, anything else for conditions?
Just to add into the findings that regarding that, that one change that was shown on the plan that they caught, that they put on today, just so we know that it was before the meeting.
Good one, thank you, Bob. All right, anything else for either findings or conditions? All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Ken. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ken?
And Forman, aye.
Ed?
Ed Van Kier, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zolinski, aye.
And TJ Hury, aye. So that motion passes unanimously. Attorney Clower, thank you.
You are very much. We appreciate your time tonight.
Hey, up next, we have application seven dash twenty one, Sullivan, three forty-five, Grand Ave in Falmouth.
Application number zero zero seven dash twenty one, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty eight of the Mass General Laws. You hereby notify that Lawrence T. and Valerie N. Sullivan of Canton, Mass. Apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C and two forty dash sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as three fifty-four Grand Ave, Falmouth, Mass. Conservation Commission voted to approve the raise and rebuild of a single-family home with covered porch, entryway, install a Title V sewage disposal system, and reconstruct existing retaining wall according to the narrative and plan prepared by Falmouth Engineering, Inc., dated December twenty third, twenty twenty, January fifth, twenty twenty-one, and January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. In a title plot plan, proposed house, and subject to the following standard, in special conditions. And they attach their decision. It's a long decision. From Engineering Department. One, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Fairmount Ave and Grand Ave are public rights of way in this area. Where alterations are proposed to the right of way, this project requires filing a street opening permit with the Engineering Division. It says, A, the plans indicate that an existing wall that is partially located within the town right of way Grand Avenue will be removed and replaced. This work will require a street opening permit since portions of the wall are in the right of way. Will this wall be relocated within the parcel? Or will a license be sought to place the new wall in the same location? We strongly suggest to replace the wall entirely on the parcel and not seek a license. B, we will require more information about this wall for the permit, including but not limited to, I, new wall location, double I protection of the town sidewalk during construction. How the construction will be performed, any work requiring closing the sidewalk, accessing construction from the sidewalk, et cetera. Erosion and sediment controls during construction. Restoration of areas between the new wall and sidewalk, if it is not rebuilt against the sidewalk. C, we request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved street opening permit from the Engineering Division prior to closing the hearing for this special permit. Or the board include the following condition, if the special permit is approved, the applicant shall obtain an approved street opening permit and post any required bond with the Engineering Division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by Engineering Division in the street opening permit. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters of public rights of way. Four, this design includes dry wells. We request the board add a condition that all roof runoff should be directed to the dry wells and that the installation- and that the installation and connection to the dry wells is confirmed. Uh, what is shown on the plan would not require a driveway permit for engineering. We require, uh, we recommend the following condition be added, uh, section ninety-nine-one affixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. Seven, we will require erosion and sediment controls along Grand Avenue under a street opening permit. However, Fairmount Avenue and the abutting properties to the east would fall outside that permit. Where this is a small lot with work close to the property line, we recommend that erosion and sediment controls are included to the project right-of-way and the butters. A limit of work is shown, but not how that work will be demarcated. We recommend that the plans be revised to include the proposed erosion and sediment controls along Fairmount Avenue and three forty-one Grand Ave property. Below some areas we would recommend details at at a minimum, and there's a depiction of what they're looking for. Uh, we recommend the following condition being included in any approval. Construction of the project shall follow the town soil erosion sediment control standard conditions, the document which can be found on the Engineering Division's page of the town's website. Our references at the Department of Public Works Engineering shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals, who would be the permitting authority for the project. Uh, from Scott McGann at Health, uh. Uh, first, there was a email on February first, twenty-twenty-one, uh, with Michael Borzelli, the P E. Uh, I said hello, Scott, as a follow-up to our telephone conversation this morning. As you know, the Board of Health voted to approve certain variances from title-five for a new septic system that will replace existing cesspools. Uh, Bernie Sullivan from your office also reviewed the house interior and confirmed the total number of bedrooms was five. The applicant is now proposing to raise and reconstruct the existing house. The total number of bedrooms will remain the same at five. The new house also has been designed so that no portion of the new house would be closer to the proposed septic system than the existing house. Therefore, the new house does not result in any new setback variances from title-five. And there was a response from Scott McGann, a same date. He said he's fine with the project, providing that there is no increase in flow and the setbacks allowed by the Board of Health in the property's local upgrade approval are not increased. From the Water Department, the water service needs to be shown on the plans for review. The exiting service is a three-quarter fed from a four-inch main in Fairmount Ave. The service will have to be shut off, cut, and capped prior to the raising. The service should be increased to a one inch during the rebuild. And the existing pit meter should be abandoned and the meter put inside the rebuilt home. From assessors, this includes lot fifty-two and fifty-three. Uh, Fire Department has no issues as drawn from historical. The applicant has applied for requests for review of demolition with the Historical Commission to waive the one-year demo delay bylaw. And as of this referral, it said the application would be on the March second, twenty-twenty-one uh Historic Commission agenda. Uh, and there is one letter of concern with comments. Uh, this is to the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, uh TJ uh Hurry, Chairman Ken Foreman, Robert Dugan, Ed Van Curran, Scott Zelinski, Mary P. Barry. We wish to express our concerns about the proposed new structure at three forty-five Grand Avenue. This is not a raise and rebuild as this notice states, it's a raise and build new. A raise and rebuild is what two Wyoming Avenue did in two thousand and six. While the footprint of the new structure decreases by fifty-five square feet, the living space increases by at least seven hundred square feet. The Grand Ave elevation of the existing home is for the first floor thirty-nine to forty feet wide with a second floor width about twenty-six feet and a ridge height of just under twenty-four. The Grand Avenue elevation of the proposed new structure is forty-two feet wide with a ridge height of just over thirty-three feet. Have any shadow studies been performed that would show the direct impact of the new structure on the butters at three forty-one Grand Avenue and one Fairmount Ave? We believe that sections two forty dash three C and two forty dash three C one B of the Falmouth Code apply. That says, please see attachment with code. Also, we are including some not-to-scale-but-close sketches as to how the view from ten Wyoming Ave will be impacted. A rough calculation is about uh one-eighth of our water view will be eliminated. Please read and include the email above and attachments into the record at the meeting on Thursday, March eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Please confirm receipt of this email and the attachments, and that's signed. Thank you, John Rourke and Terry Rourke, ten Wyoming Ave. And the attachments which the board has, has the drawings they submitted. Uh, on the bylaw, they did highlight two sections under two forty dash three C. They highlighted any such change, extension or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or structure. And they highlighted under two forty dash three C B one B. However, the extension of a structure may be considered a detriment after the Board of Appeals considers whether the extension extends or creates a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs views or vistas, or does not reasonably conform to the average dimensions found in the neighborhood. And the remaining are just photos where they have sketched in what they believe would be their effect uh on view from ten Wyoming Ave. Uh, second floor, uh, looking towards Wyoming. And that's all we have right now.
All right, thank you, Bob, and the voting members on this project will be the regular voting members. And for the applicant, once again, we have Attorney Clower.
Evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, I am Attorney Kevin Clower. Uh, I'm here tonight representing Larry and Valerie Sullivan, the owners of three forty-five Grand Avenue and the applicants in this matter. They are here tonight seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling on the site. Uh, three forty-five Grand Avenue is uh located very much in Falmouth Heights, uh overlooking the bluff above Vineyard Sound. Uh, it's in the middle of a, it's on the edge of a very dense, largely seasonal neighborhood on a lot of four thousand six hundred and forty-two square feet and is in the residential C zoning district. Uh, earlier this afternoon, I did receive an email from a stockman alerting me to a potential error in the site plans. Uh, those balconies um on the building plans appear to extend slightly past the overhang of the floor below, which is not reflected on the site plans. Uh, unfortunately, I was unable to discuss this with the engineer, Mike Borzelli of Falmouth Engineering, as he was out of the office today. Will obviously need to do so and um and potentially revise the plans uh and submit those to the board. So I I fully expect that we'll need a continuance uh this evening. But I'd like to take advantage of the opportunity of being here to introduce this project, um, see if we can address any questions the board might have tonight, or determine what questions we need to answer prior to the next hearing. Uh, presently at the site, there's a five-bedroom, single-family dwelling. It has a footprint of one thousand six hundred and seventy-six square feet. Uh, it's non-conforming in almost every way that a property can be non-conforming. It's uh, the front yard setback is uh two point six feet where twenty-five is required. The side yard setback is five feet where ten feet is required. The rear yard setback is six inches where ten feet is required. And the lot coverage by structure is thirty-six point one percent where twenty percent is allowed by right and up to twenty-five percent is allowed by special permit. Uh, and good news, it is conforming to lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking at thirty-nine point eight percent where forty percent is allowed. The existing structure here is in poor condition, and and uh though it is old, it is of no historic significant value. Uh, at a recent Historical Commission, it was referred to as a bit of a Frankenstein's monster in that sense. There's been additions and materials added haphazardly over the years. Uh, the applicants are proposing to raise the existing dwelling and to rebuild a new five-bedroom home. Uh, this would have uh pretty significant results on the non-conformities. Uh, the footprint of the structure would be shrunk slightly, uh, resulting in a decrease in decrease in lot coverage. It's uh, it's not to major, but it is a decrease. It's thirty-six point one percent to thirty-four point nine. The front yard setback is improved, um, twenty-two point six to two point nine. It's minimal, but it is an improvement. The side yard setback remains essentially the same. It's currently five feet and it's going to five point one. Uh, and the rear yard setback is improved from six inches to seven point seven feet. Uh, the structure will increase in height. Currently, it's twenty-three point eight inches and as proposed is uh thirty-three feet, four inches. Uh, there's a half-story at the top, which is, I don't think even a quarter-story, to be quite honest. There's very little massing on that top floor. Overall, uh, the gross floor area of this project increases uh less than two hundred square feet. The bedrooms remain the same. The new title, there's a new title-five system which has been discussed, which was approved by the Board of Health. And in addition, there's an order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission, and the Historical Commission has issued a waiver of the demolition delay bylaw at their most recent hearing. This project does require a special permit under both two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E. Under two forty-three C, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. And in order to determine that, the board is asked to consider the standards of two forty-two sixteen and whether or not the alteration creates new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new non-conformity created. Uh, and as I discussed, a number of the existing non-conformities are improved. There's no effect on views and vistas of the public, and it is consistent with the neighborhood, which I'll elaborate on in a moment. In the RC zoning district, lot coverage by structure exceeding twenty percent does require a special permit under two forty-sixty-nine E. And in that instance, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effects of shadow on adjacent properties, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. In this case, there, there's no impact of views and vistas in public way. Though the building is larger, uh, it's in an area with many similarly tall structures, and it is situated lower than many of the surrounding properties. There's no effective nitrogen on coastal abeyments. There is a new septic, and it's designed for the same number of bedrooms as exists, and it's an improvement as it's replacing an existing cesspool. As to the size and height of the structure, uh, we did take a look at the neighborhood and submitted a lot comparison worksheet for the nearby properties. Of the twenty-eight properties located within a three-hundred-foot radius, uh, of those twenty-eight, twenty-three have larger footprints and twenty-one have larger gross floor areas. This property, as proposed, remains among the smaller homes in the area, both in terms of footprint and gross floor area. Uh, it's certainly appropriate with those nearby properties and fits in with the neighborhood. This project represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions, replaces an aged uh cesspool system with a new septic and replaces a house that's in significant disrepair, both cosmetically and structurally. This won't create any new dimension of non-conformities and improves existing non-conformities, which includes the front, side, rear yard setbacks and lot coverage by structure, and it also decreases the lot cover by structures, paving, and parking, which was conforming, but does decrease. I believe this project meets the standards of two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E as well as two forty-two sixteen. Um, as we've discussed, I believe we will need a continuation to uh take a look at that plan to see if uh we need to make some revisions and potentially submit those revisions, but I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. We'll see if the board does have any questions about the project. Uh, James, do you want to start us off if you have anything?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, James. Uh, Bob?
So, Mr. Clower, how are they proposing to handle the the wall right now that's in the that busts the sidewalk in the town right of way where they'd have to do construction now?
So my understanding is they they want to preserve as much of that wall as possible. Because replacing it in full would be a pretty significant undertaking. Uh, an application has been submitted to the Board of Selectmen uh to uh for a license for uh the small areas of encroachment. Uh, they're pretty minor. Um, about a half a foot in two small locations. Uh, that was submitted to the board. Uh, again, I think the idea is to to preserve as much of that wall as possible and only replace if and when necessary.
Do you have any idea when the selectman would be hearing something like that? I mean, my only, my only concern is that, you know, hopefully they would go with the license, but if they don't go with the license, because that's the pedestrian passway that's right there. Um, and you you pretty much would have to dismantle and block that area.
So, at the risk of, uh, at the risk of shooting myself in the foot and 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 knocking on every piece of wood I can reach, um, I think the Board of Selectmen has a pretty good track record for for issuing licenses, and if they didn't, then we'd have to address that.
Um, so when I was at the, so how much parking is available on that? I know it is a small space now. Are they expanding that, or how many cars can you actually fit on the property?
So the new septic system is an H-twenty system, so they can park on the lawn if need be. Uh, there is, there is a driveway. Um, parking has always been tight in heights. Um, but, you know, they have space on on the lot to put cars if need be.
And on the um, I guess I just had a question regarding the bedroom count, so I understand the Health Department went in and, you know, one of the bedrooms doesn't have a closet, but it does meet their other criteria on on current title-five, so they consider that a bedroom. But was that property a-actually built as a five? Was it built as a four? And since it was recently purchased, do you have the uh title-five report uh when the property was was purchased on how that was sold?
Um, I believe the town has it assessed as a five. Uh, a closet is not actually a requirement under the title-five can um regulations. Uh, they look at at ceiling height, floor space, privacy, and and egress. Um, I can take a look at the title-five. I don't have it in front of me at the moment. But we did represent Mr. and Mrs. Sullivan when they purchased, so I'm sure we could take a look.
And the fence, when you're looking at the driveway and there's that uh vinyl fence, is that vinyl fence part of this property or the property next door?
Uh, I believe that there, there's a privacy fence that looks to be uh to the left of the property line. I'm not, uh, I, to be quite honest, I'm not sure whose fence that is. Uh, I don't want to speculate.
So when I was up there and looked at the stakes, it appears at the stake where the driveway starts is about maybe two feet in from where the fence is. It's actually beyond the trees that are there. But when you go to the back corner in that same spot, the um, the bound that's marked says that the lot line is actually two feet on the other side of the fence. So are there any, where that, where that side piece touches the sideline, how do you propose construction there versus the, you know, properties in such close proximity?
I think that uh in heights, uh, property lines have always been more of a polite suggestion than a rule. Um, but uh, that's something that we'll need to address. Uh, the builder is here tonight if you want to elevate him to address that question. Um, I, you know, we've, we've had to remove property, you know, structures from close proximity to property lines before. I'm sure that they'll do so in a way that is um safe and 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 efficient and uh protective of both uh this property and the abutting properties.
That's all I have, Richard.
All right, thank you, Bob. Ken?
I've addressed most of the questions I had. I mean, I did wonder about whether that fence was encroaching uh on the budding lot, but uh yeah, I noticed that stake as well, uh, two foot, two feet from here. But you're gonna fix all that with this new.
I don't think there'd be any objection to relocating that fence if it is in fact the applicant's.
All right, Ed?
I think I've covered everything so far. Thank you.
Very good. Mary?
I have no comment.
Thank you, Mary. Scott?
Attorney Clower, any um, any consideration for a reserve area for the septic? It's not shown on the plan.
You know, you know, Scott, I knew, I knew you were gonna ask septic questions, and I didn't have a chance to speak with Mike today.
Bring anybody to answer them.
Well, he was, he was, he was unavailable today, and uh we are gonna be coming back. Uh, so, you know, I'm, I'm sure that the he had to do whatever he had to do to get the uh Board of Health to approve this. Uh, there was an existing system with five bedrooms, and we're replacing it with a, with a better system with five bedrooms. I I do know that there were some variances. Granted, uh, my knowledge of 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 the septic system beyond that, quite, quite honestly, is a bit murky.
That's fine, fair enough. Uh, with regards to the over, the the cannoli but overhang on the second story, that all we're going to expect to see as an uh as changes to the revised um plot plan when it comes back, or there are other things that?
Uh, I think, I think we're gonna add the water line. I heard that mentioned as a, as a request, and I didn't see it on this plan. So I'd ask Mike to to include the water line. Um, but I'm not expecting any other changes, you know, to the extent that that might have any impact on lot coverage will of course reflect that. But I think it would be pretty minimal. It's a, it's a, it's a small overhang. Uh, it's a small overhang beyond the the what's the word I'm looking for here? Um, it's not much beyond the existing overhang. It's not much beyond the existing overhang.
So, with your testimony that there are no, you're not creating any new non-conformities, that doesn't calculate into that, that?
No, I mean, I, I did some quick back of the envelope math, and I don't think these changes will have any impact on, on the lot coverage. And in negative, I mean, it won't be 34.9, but it won't be above 36.1.
But that would be accurately represented when it comes back, correct?
Of course it will.
Continue this?
Of course it will.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. And Attorney Clower, that half, I guess quarter story that you were mentioning in the middle of the building there, what's the purpose of that area?
Well, they've been labeled as, I mean, quite, you know, I think the purpose of it is to capture the amazing view of Vineyard Sound. I think that's the purpose of it.
Is it just a little walk-up space? I mean, what, what exactly?
They have it labeled as a TV room. It could be, you know, it could be a study. It could be a reading area. It could be a reading nook. It's, it is big enough to, to have some chairs. It does not constitute a bedroom. There's no privacy up there. But it would be, you know, a pretty stunning place to see the sun go down over, over the sound.
Absolutely. And you said that height at that point is 33, four, is it?
The height at that point will be 33 feet, four inches. That's correct.
Right. Thank you. We will turn it to public comment. If there's any question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon within the Zoom app, and we will get to you in a moment. Looks like we do have someone already. If I can figure out where they are. Sarah, welcome. If we could elevate her, please. All right, Sarah, you're elevated. All you need to do is unmute yourself. And if you could introduce yourself and give us your address, please. Looks like you are unmuted, but if you're trying to talk, we, at least I can hear you. I'm not sure about anyone else. So, Sarah's typing in the chat. That's correct, Sarah. We cannot hear you. But go ahead. If you want to use the chat function and type in your question, go right ahead. And while Sarah's doing that, I'll just remind everyone, if there's anyone else out there with a question, comment, or concern, go ahead and click the raised hand icon, and we will get to you shortly. All right. So, Sarah's saying a few things. I'll just mention them as they come in. She lives at One Fairmount. I am supportive of what the owners want to do with a couple of concerns. I believe the fence is mine. And at one place, the fence is actually the side of their house. So concerned with proximity. Also concerned about the change to the front elevation of then-house, which will affect my view, et cetera. And lastly, just timing and traffic. All right, Ms. Welcome. Thank you for your comments, and thank you for mentioning that was your last comment. I was going to ask for some sort of indication with typing in. Attorney Clower, I don't know if you want to address any of Ms. Welcome's concerns?
Sure. So, you know, I, I was just looking at, at Google Maps and, you know, the unofficial rule of thumb with, with fences is typically the ugly side faces the owner. And that does appear to be that way. I'm sure that the applicant would be willing to work with Ms. Welcome to make sure that, you know, if their defense doesn't need to be moved at all, that it's replaced appropriately. If there's any damage, that it's replaced. With regard to the view, I think that, you know, there will certainly be some impact to, to her because there is an increase in size of the structure. But I think that it is being done in a fairly tasteful manner that will not completely obstruct, nor do I believe that the zoning by law protects that. I think that the, again, the, the owner, the applicants would be happy to have, you know, open dialogue with Ms. Welcome in order just to make sure that there's no misunderstandings or issues with the fence or the property during the construction process. And of course, you know, I suspect that would be subject to the construction hours that the board typically puts in. I'm not sure what the timeframe for this would be. And I've just reached out to try to find out when the intended start date would be, assuming we were to receive an approval, but I don't know the answer to that question at this moment.
Okay. In terms of traffic, Attorney Clower, would you be able to keep all, all construction on site or construction vehicles?
That would certainly be the intent. As I mentioned, it is an H20 system that's going in, which can support pretty substantial load. There was an existing driveway that'll be maintained. I think that there's the ability to put more cars on that lot than one might expect. And that would be the intent. But as we've mentioned, you know, parking is always difficult in the Heights. And, but we would not be planning on utilizing parking in any of the public ways with construction vehicles.
Very good. Okay. Looks like we have another public comment. If we could please elevate Joe Alberta. All right, Joe, you're elevated, and I think you just unmuted yourself. So, if you could introduce yourself, give us your address for the record, along with any comment that you might have.
Sure. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Joe Alberta. I own 10 Fairmount Avenue. There's a butter. Just a couple of questions. And similar to what Sarah was sharing, I, I did not see, I, I just heard that there is going to be some impact to the elevation kind of difference between the existing property and the new property. I couldn't tell what that actual height differential was or what's being proposed. So, I guess that was just one question. You know, I, I certainly have some concern over some impact to the, you know, to the, the pretty view that it is. So, just wanted to share that, you know, that there is some concern there. The other, only other question I had was, there is a crosswalk right at the, at the end of Fairmount Avenue and Grand Avenue to the, you know, essentially to the right. And I just, I don't believe this is the case, but obviously it's a pretty, it's already a crosswalk with a, you know, some pretty poor sightlines from cars coming up, up the corner, up on Grand Ave and so on. And I, I just wanted to know if there was any, you know, with some of the overhangs or so on, is this any, is any, any of this going to impact, even further impact some of those sightlines with that crosswalk? Because we certainly use that, and just wanted to be, just kind of get them, get them reaction to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alberta. Attorney Clower?
Yeah, I, I, I can't imagine why there'd be any impact to the crosswalk or, you know, nor do I think it would be impeding any of the sightlines because we're maintaining essentially the existing setbacks or improving them. Mr. Alberta, I'd be happy to, if the board's okay, I'd be happy to share the screen to show the proposed structure, which also shows the existing ridge height, which might give some context.
Sure. Go right ahead.
So, this is the proposed house as viewed from Grand Ave. And this line here is 23 feet, eight inches. That's the existing ridge height. This is the 33 feet, four inches. And as I've mentioned, this is, you know, it's not a full story that they're putting on above that. It's, it's a much smaller area that's going to be coming up higher. So, there's not much bulk being added above the existing ridge height. I'm not sure if that, I hope that answers.
That's helpful. That's helpful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alberta. All right. Anyone else out there with a question, comment, or concern? Click the raised hand icon, and we can elevate you in a moment. All right. Not seeing anyone. Back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to the testimony given by the applicant's representative that they'd like to conduct some dialogue with the abutters and have to make some adjustments to the plan, I would make a motion that we continue this to a further date, please.
Sounds good, Scott. And we'll just defer to Noreen in terms of available date.
Before, before we accept a date, could I just ask a couple more questions and just go on what we're going to need?
Sure. Go ahead, Bob.
I was about to ask the same question. I just want to make sure that we're able to address any questions that the board has outstanding and make sure that we know, have everything submitted in advance of the next.
So, I don't, so I don't see anything on the plan as far as mechanicals or like AC units outside or RIN stations. So, are there going to be no AC units outside, no RIN stations? Or is that something that you may add that isn't on the plan now? My other question, I'll give you all at once. The other question is, you've mentioned comments by the Health Department regarding variances for Title V, for cesspools to Title V's. It doesn't seem that that referred to a specific variance for the house that they've given. I know that on properties I've had to deal with, with septic systems in the Heights, they've all had to get variances and go before the Health Board. So, I just want to make sure that if a variance is going to be required here, that's something they get before the Health Board?
The, the Board of Health has approved the septic system.
But the, the statement that was made about we do variances in the area, it almost sounded like they would do a variance. Are, are they, are they assuming that this septic is going to be a variance?
I, I think this, my understanding, and I'll have to confirm this with, with Mike Porcelli, is that the, the septic system has been approved, and I believe that, that approval was a variance for setbacks.
Okay. And then when you do these plans, because there's been a lot of questions on, and it's also in the letter, can you show us some kind of elevations that show comparisons to the adjacent properties? Distance to the adjacent properties? And normally at something like this, I wouldn't ask for it, but I would like to see something. If you can have something there on shadow because you're so close to the two adjacent properties there. Also, a plan from the builder on how they're going to maintain a construction schedule because it is a blind turn when you're coming out of Fairmount, going towards the beach. Again, and with the walkway, so it would be nice if we could see some kind of a plan in advance. There's also a public park area in the middle. They wouldn't be able to use that at all. So, they're going to have to figure out exactly how they can handle construction in and out of there.
I had one.
Thank you, Bob.
One bit of other information that, that was raised by the Director Butter, which is, yeah, I noticed the same thing. The fence looks like it's actually part of the existing house, at least in places. Obviously, if you raise that house, that fence is going to be affected. So, I'm just wondering what the plan is, especially if, and if we can get clarity on whose fence it is. Where, where is it on the property?
So, I'm happy to get that information for you.
And if you could also add on that, the questions from engineering, there was things they wanted depicted on the plan that aren't there now that they could look at, so you could also handle that with engineering?
Anything else, an expectation of the next hearing? All right. Noreen, what do we have for an available date?
So, I don't know. March 18th is possible for you, Kevin? Is that too soon?
I mean, I, I think it might be, unfortunately. I'd love to be back here next week. I just don't know that we can make it submitted tomorrow.
Okay. Because the subsequent meeting is March 25th, but you have 240B scheduled for that night. So, I'm not sure if that's something that the board wants to add to that night.
Well, I feel like we've already had the bulk of the hearing, and maybe we could just wrap things up.
Okay.
It went first. That's my opinion.
All right. So, the next would be March 25th, then.
All right. Attorney Clower, are you available on 3/25?
I certainly can be. All right. I was going to have a rare night off in the ZBA, but I'll be back.
All right. If we do it, if we do it on the 25th, can we hear the 40Bs first?
I was going to suggest just the opposite. Let's get this out of the way, not make Kevin sit around all night.
Well, it just seems that we've had these other projects that they end up taking up more time than you think when you get to it. And then we get to the 40Bs and, you know, we're there at 11 o'clock at night, haven't gotten to the other questions, you know?
Well, if, if this is the only other item on the agenda. Noreen, what else is?
So, there are two other cases that night, plus the 240Bs.
I think it's too long.
Yep.
So, the date after that would be April 8.
All right. I think that might be a better date in terms of scheduling.
Let me make a motion to continue to April 8.
Second.
Second.
All right. Motion to continue to April 8th, made by Scott and seconded by Bob. Roll call vote once again. Bob?
I, Robert Duganai.
Ken?
Ken Formanai.
Ed?
Ed Van Kieranai.
Scott?
Scott Sainsky.
And TJ Hurryai. So, this hearing is continued to April 8th. Attorney Clower, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Have a great night.
You, too. All right. Moving right along. We, the next application we have is application 8-21 Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, Care of Garrick and Associates LLC, 132 East Falmouth Highway, also known as 13 Old Barnstable Road in East Falmouth.
So, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that application number 00821 Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, Care of Garrick and Associates LLC, P.O. Box 98, West Mystic, Connecticut, is applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-3c, 240-23e, and 240-216 of the Code of Falmouth. Mass General Laws 40A and 47 USC 332C7B to remove existing cell tower and replace with a new tower and accessory equipment. The subject property is 132 East Falmouth Highway, also known as 13 Old Barnstable Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Referrals. Engineering. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Old Barnstable Road is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with Engineering Division. East Falmouth Highway is a state right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any alterations within the right of way will require permission from Mass DOT. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any storm or to run off the public property of butters or public rights of way. And four, the referral and plans reference 132 East Falmouth Highway. The only address we have for this parcel is 13 Old Barnstable Road. From Concom, no comment. The project appears to fall outside of conservation jurisdiction. Planning Board, no comment. Water Department, no comment. Fire Department has no issues with the project as drawn. There is one letter of opposition. This letter is dated March 9th, 2021. To the zoning board of appeals, dear board members, I am writing to oppose application number 008-21 by Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. Request for changes in this tower. Requests for changes in this tower were made in 2004 and 2017. The tower was allowed to be taken down and rebuilt on the original cement base. At that time, the company also requested accessory cabinets be installed at the base of the tower. The request to keep them outside was denied. The equipment, cabinets, and generators were ultimately required to be placed inside the building. This was done for noise and safety reasons. These same requests are being made today. I understand that an existing tower is tempting to accompany like Verizon, just like it was tempting to Sprint years ago. However, I find it very unsettling that this tower, which went up in 1970s in a residential zone without a permit, continues to be an easy target for corporations simply because it exists. The application seeks to use a pre-existing non-conforming structure. I reviewed the plans and a new tower would be built beside the current structure, not in place of it. In granting this permit, the board would be allowing a new additional non-conforming structure in a residential zone. If approved as requested, they would also be allowing added outside base cabinets and equipment. If this application is ultimately approved, I would ask that any base cabinets, et cetera, would at least be placed inside the building as they have been in the past. When my father, Edward Repose, and I spoke against this in 2004, we cited our concerns about allowing this type of technology into a residential neighborhood. Unfortunately, that did not prevent it. As an abutter, I'm very concerned about exposure to radio frequency energy and the effect it will have on my family and our neighbors. Again, I ask that you deny this application in an effort to prevent further corporate access to a structure that was never legally approved in the first place. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Melanie Repose Copexa, 15 Old Barnstable Road, East Falmouth, Mass. And that's all I have in the file.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And if we could please elevate, I think in the list, it's Garrick. All right, Mr. Garrick, you're currently muted. You'll just have to unmute yourself and turn on your video.
Can you hear me?
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Carl Gearing on behalf of Verizon Wireless. Just, I noticed, Mr. Chair, you sat on this, on the board five year, a little over five years ago, when Verizon went through this recently for the exact same thing. Basically, it's a little bit different now, and I'm gonna explain. I believe Mr. Van Kier and you were also a board member at the time.
Yes.
So it may ring a bell. I was not involved with the project then. I was given the file recently. The, for whatever reason, they didn't follow through and build at that, in a timely manner, and their permits expired. And so we had to kind of start over from scratch. But the, the good news is a different engineering firm was hired, and they were able to, when I was first given the file and I was reviewing it, I saw that the prior application was for both a special permit to replace an existing non-conforming structure, which is what we're again asking for, but it was also a dimensional variance for setbacks. And so we went back to the drawing board with the new engineering firm to see if there's a way to move things around and eliminate that variance to make for a cleaner application. We have done that. And so there's no variance element to this petition this evening. It's simply a special permit only for, under your title, section 240-3C, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be extended, altered, or changed by special permit for the Board of Appeals. Any such change or alter shall not be, shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Mr. Garrick, you muted yourself somehow.
Can you hear me?
We have you back now.
I don't know where I left off there, but I wanted to point that out, that this is not an application for a new cell tower per se. It's an application to rebuild one that's already there. And the dilemma is that it was looked at all different ways by the engineering firm, and to try to rebuild what's in place while Sprint is on would be structurally, I suppose, with enough money and time, it could be done, but it would just be completely impractical and expensive to do that. So the solution, which was proposed before, is to simply build another one right next to it and take this one down, so there's still only one tower and just be shifted over. We've shifted it on the site to not to avoid the, the variance. So what I'd like to do is very quickly go through the contents of the application binder that I submitted to you. And I found by doing so, I will often answer some of your questions in advance. So if you could allow me to get to the floor quickly.
Sure. Just a moment, Mr. Garrick. My apologies. We might have some technical difficulties here. I think Scott Solinsky got dropped. Is he still here? If he could be, I think he's in the attendees list. If he could be elevated again. Scott, did we lose you completely during that minute or so, or were you just in the attendees list? And you're muted, Scott. Sorry. Just need confirmation.
Yeah, I, I could see and hear everybody. They just dropped me.
All right.
I, I heard the testimony, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Garrick, sorry. It's, it's what we deal with with the virtual meetings these days.
I know. So on the second page of the coverage letter is the table of contents of those 10 tabs. And under tab one is our, what I call the town application form, which is right into the record, is simply a special permit, no variance. Under tab two, I've cited to, I've given a brief description that I've cited to the use analysis and then all the special permit criteria. I'm not gonna read those, but I do want to come back and touch on those, because they actually mirror the findings that, that the, I noticed that the narrative I had written in support of our petition was mirrored in the findings back in 2015, where the board concurred that this met the standard. And so I'm hoping that it will still, again, because really nothing's changed. It's actually a cleaner application in the sense that we don't need the variance now. Under tab three is a permission from our landowner. Now, from reading the minutes of the prior time, one thing that may have changed over time, I don't know the dynamics, but this tower is owned by the landowner. Sprint is a tenant on there. And the deal we have, and so, so we came along, we're directed by federal law, you know, there's an incentive to try to find existing structures first before we go and build a new tower in the area. So we always look for existing towers, water tanks, tall buildings, any kind of a structure we can go on before we build a new cell tower, because that's always the last resort. So that, you can imagine the site folks were overjoyed when they saw this tower. Unfortunately, it did not pass a structural analysis, and there's a couple of things going on there. It was, it was built in the 70s, I think, as a two-way radio tower. And then Sprint came along in 2004, 2003, 2004, and, and did a deal with the landowner where they agreed to rebuild it, lower it, you know, and make it structurally suitable for them. Subsequent to that, the building code has been updated. This, in the industry, we call this Rev G. Used to be Revision F for the building code, and the new code is Revision G. And they've tightened up a lot of the building codes, especially with cell towers, where it's one of those things where you see it probably in other commercial entities, where if you're, if you have an existing property and you're using it and everything's fine, you don't have to change anything, but as soon as you want to make a change or do something different, now all of a sudden you have to bring it up to code. And that's what's tripped us up here, where the tower is not suitable to, to accommodate us, and, and because of the new revisions to the building code, we're, if we want to do something on that, we've got to bring it up to code now, which I think is a good thing for everyone in the neighborhood, to have a structure, a solid, sturdy, current, up-to-date, up-to-code structure. So, so the, but the tower is owned by the landowner, and so the deal with Verizon struck is said, look, we want to go on that thing. It's not suitable to hold us now. We'll rebuild it at our expense and then deed it back to you, so it remains property of the landowner. We're gonna be doing this at our expense for our benefit, so we can get on there. We're gonna move Sprint over. We're gonna do all that, but the tower will remain owned by the, by the landowner. And so that, under tab three, is our landowner authorization. Under tab four, I put, just routinely put into all my applications, the field card and tax map, so you could, you can see that you're familiar with the subject property. And then under number five, I put in the prior decisions that, as I said, Mr. Chair, and you and Mr. Van Kier and we're on that, the board at that time. Only one of them is really relevant now, the special permit one, the variance we don't need. But it's interesting to note that the board found that the proposed tower will be an improvement in telecommunications for the community. And then the findings, we've gone through that the site is adequate, the site is suitable. There'll be no traffic issues, the digital character, the neighborhood will not be an issue, no sewage disposal, it's unmanned, unoccupied, doesn't use water or sewer. And so all the basic findings that I outlined back in, I tapped to my statement, are mirrored by those findings that you found and concluded five years ago, which should, in my opinion, are the same. Now, what we've, we have updated this, this RF report under tab six. And one thing that's interesting to note is on page six of tab six is that surrounding sites, and if you look at those, that, you know, we're coming in from all these other surrounding towers, so for the average height of those surrounding towers, if you total them all up, you take out that rooftop, it's all up all the other towers, some of which are guide, old fashioned guide towers. The average height is 137 feet, centerline for our antennas. This tower itself taps out at 100 feet, and then we're going below that. So this is low by wireless cellphone standards. It's not a very tall tower structure. And then the plots were shown where, I can share those on screen and describe those to you if you're interested, but the gist is that we have some, we have decent 700, 700 megahertz coverage. Basically, Verizon has multiple licenses, six or seven FCC licenses. So we're like multiple companies in one, and they have the rights under the federal telecommunications act and federal law to build out the networks for all of those licenses, as if they were separate companies. And that's the benefit to our users and our customers, that we have all these different services we can provide. We have a big problem with the 2100 megahertz sector, and that's what we need help on. And that's where coverage is coming in now. If you are a Verizon customer and you were down there recently, and this afternoon even, and made a phone call, you might say, well, I don't, what's the problem? I was able to make a cold, a call down there this afternoon. The problem is that that coverage is actually coming in from under remote site, a site we call Falmouth Four, and another site we call Falmouth Six, which, you know, Falmouth Four is up on 284 Meaning House Road. Falmouth Six is 60 Spring Bar Road. That's a guide tower. Falmouth Four one is 100, we're at 147 feet, which tells me that's at least 150-foot tower, if not taller. And the, the Falmouth Six one is at 120 we're at, so it's taller than that as well. But there's a phenomenon in radio frequency engineering where there's a finite amount of power given off, and the more users that get on the line, the footprint shrinks. We have radio station licenses, but we're two-way radio. We broadcast out. We have to hear back from you. So unlike conventional broadcast radio, where you AM or FM or whatever, where you just turn in your receiver, we are having a conversation with you as the user, and the network actually controls the power on your phone, so that if you're really far away from a site, it'll power up your phone. If you're really close to a site, it'll power it down. It'll track you as you're moving, so it can hand you off. And there's a finite amount of power, finite amount of bandwidth for all the users. The more people that get on, it shrinks it down, and then you lose coverage. And that's the problem now, that coverage is coming in from these remote areas. I say remote, you know, back in the day, that, you know, 25 years ago, those, that was not considered remote, back when it was analog. But now with the digital technology, these sites have to be closer, closer together. It's called densification of the network, and footprint shrinkage causes these problems. So this site is a perfect sol, solution to that, because it's an existing tower. It fits right in there, where it'll take the pressure off those surrounding sites and provide primary coverage to that location. And it, it couldn't work out better. And the fact that we can rebuild it with your permission, that would work out really well for us to avoid having to build a new tower somewhere else nearby. Under tab seven is a report of an outside consultant that I hired, independent health physicist. As the board may be aware, under telecommunications law, under federal law, the board is not allowed to get into discussions about the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that we comply with federal law. So I hired this independent consultant. Rather than ask Verizon to police themselves and show us proof, I hired this independent, say, okay, here's what Verizon's proposing. Is this complying with federal law, yes or no? Which answers the question that you're allowed to ask, and the yes conclusion is yes. But the thing that I think is interesting, if you look on page eight of this report, this is under tab seven, page eight of that gentleman's report, he has that graph there. He does all the math and then charts it out. And it shows the RF coming off of that. It spikes up and then drops down, and the spike is, you know, anywhere between 2.59, 3%. That's 3% of the allowed limit. In other words, 100% is the maximum we'd be allowed under the federal law. We're only at 3%, which means you could have 30 more towers on this site and still be compliant. That's how low-power and how much of a non-issue that is. It's so low, and so I, I read, I heard your, the letter, the letter written in the record from the abutter. I tried to reach out to that individual through email to see if we could have a conversation, to try to sway you any concerns or anything, because this is really so low-power, it's a non-issue. We're like a low-power college radio station where the, the signal doesn't go very far. That's why we need sites closer together now than we ever used to. Under tab eight is an FAA report. Anytime we build a new structure, we have to make sure that we're clear. Now, there's already one there, so what's the problem? Well, I just thought, to be prudent, let's run the report, because things could have changed over time, flight paths. I noticed we're in that search and rescue corridor where it's limited to 100 feet. We're not exceeding that. But we ran FAA anyway, and it's a non-issue for FAA. The tower does not be lighted. It's not obstructing any flight paths. And then under tab nine is a report from a real estate appraiser that I hired, because the standard in your bylaw is, shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing. So it would be a different story if there was no tower there now, and we were coming in and wanting to build this thing. But there's already a tower there. It's been there for years. And so the question I posed to this, again, independent appraiser, doesn't work for Verizon. I said, analyze the situation. Tell me if in your opinion that will be, have any negative impact on property values, will be substantially more detrimental? And his conclusion was no. If you look on the second page of his report, where he concludes, and I'm quoting, it is my opinion that the proposed replacement of the 100-foot tower, blah, 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 will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhoods existing. So that's basically the standard now, that's backed up by a real estate appraiser, expert in that field. And then under tab 10, everyone's got a half-size, full-out set of plans. And the gist of this is that the, it's, there's a, there's an interesting, I don't want to belabor this too much, but I thought it would be helpful to understand what some of the, the dialogue that we went through. If the board has heard of the so-called Section 6409, this federal law that came out recently, where existing towers, the FCC and the FAPads are trying to encourage the use of existing structures rather than build new towers. So if there's already an existing water tank that has antennas on it, we'll look at that first. If there's already an existing tall building that has an antennas, go there first and see if you can make that work before you go build a new tower. And the same applies to existing towers. So under Section 6409, under federal law, that's an exemption from zoning. If this tower was structurally suitable and we didn't need to make any upgrades, we could go and get a building permit to go on that right now, and would not even involve this board. We wouldn't even be wasting your time discussing this, because we could simply go on under federal law as an exemption from zoning. However, and then, so we thought about that. I thought, well, is there a way to do that? And, and rebuild, as I mentioned earlier, rebuild the existing one and, and sort of use that Section 6409 to avoid having to go to zoning at all and just rebuild it there. And, and the discussion was, yeah, if you spend enough money and spend a long, a long enough time, you could undermine the foundation and reinforce it, and one by one, take each member, you know, each structural member out, replace it with a beef, it would be such a cumbersome, impractical construction operation, that it just doesn't make any sense. The cleaner way to do this is simply build another one right next to it, as close as possible, same height, but structurally meeting the new code. So it's gonna be a little beefier, thicker leg sections and stuff, but substantially similar to what's there now. And then simply remove the existing one, and then our equipment will go in the place where it is now. So that motivates us. We gotta get that thing down, because there was some discussion, well, how, you know, you know, I'd heard some people say, well, now there's gonna be two towers there. No, 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 no. And we obviously welcome that as a hard and fast condition of our approval, that there's not gonna be two towers there. It's gonna be one. We have to build a new one, get Sprint over, disconnect their old equipment, get that old tower down, put our new equipment down, and then hook up. Now, the equipment changed over time, in the sense that we've, we've eliminated the generator. So that's off the table. There is no generator. We've also gone with, a lot's changed in five years, as you can imagine, in the technology field, and we've gone with new cabinets, outdoor cabinets, that are not gonna bother anyone. They're gonna be inside that stockade fence compound, hidden and in there, where you won't even know they exist. And they are so quiet and so unobtrusive, that that is a complete non-issue. A window, air conditioner in a residential home nearby is gonna give off more noise than those things. And by taking the generator off the table, that's, that's eliminated that issue completely. So our proposal then is to design it so that we have no need for the variance. We'll meet the setbacks, build it right next door, take the old one down, clean up the site, fix that fence up, rebuild that fence, put our equipment behind there, where they'll never see it, and be back on air and back in business, where it's basically the same situation, just a structurally suitable tower that it's our opinion and the opinion- and the opinion of the expert, the appraiser, that it will be not substantially more detrimental. And I respectfully request that the, the board, well, Mr. Chair and Mr. Van Kuren, that you could recall the hearing and your conclusions last time. But if you look at the, what was the findings from last time, it's my, it's our position that really it's the same, if anything, better now because of this more quiet equipment and the foregoing the generator. So for those reasons, we respectfully ask for your approval of this petition as submitted.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Garrick. Well, we will turn it to board questions. James, do you have anything?
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you, James. Bob?
I guess so. So can you put the equipment or cabinetry? Can you put something inside a building?
No, I guess something changed in the last five years. Originally, it was going to go in there, and now there's no more space inside. So I don't know what the landlord's done in there. But no, I, I was the first key question I asked. Why can't we go back inside like we did before? And it's not available. It's not an option. But the good thing is in the five years, the outdoor equipment technology's come such a long way that it's a non, it's a non-issue to put these cabinets outside. They're all rainproof, waterproof, and they're hidden behind the fence. You're never going to see them or hear them.
So, so in the findings in the previous permit, I was just trying to go through what the findings were before. So, so one of the big issues last time is that they showed that there was a gap in coverage. There was a gap. They needed to fill a gap. They weren't increasing reliability of service. They were actually filling something that didn't exist. They were concerned about keeping, you know, the cabinetry inside the building. That was a concern. They had the same person that submitted tonight, submitted at the previous hearing and their testimony. And there was a concern about location of the generator because they wanted to make sure it was farthest away from any residential property. So how does this relate to any of those?
Well, there's no generator anymore, so that's off the table. The equipment, there's no space available inside. So necessity dictates we have to go outside. And as I said, the equipment cabinets we're proposing now are so much different than what they were five years ago. That's not, five years ago, Verizon wasn't really using outdoor cabinets. Some of the other carriers do. They, Verizon would either go inside or they'd put a shed, you know, a shelter on the ground. In the last several years, they've gotten away from that. And now they're doing these, these high-tech, modern, outdoor, you know, very quiet and smooth outdoor cabinets. So the, it's, the issues that arose to those five years ago are not the same. It's apples to oranges. And getting the generator off the table takes that noise source away completely.
And, and just to confirm regarding height, what's the, what's the height of this tower versus the one that currently exists?
Exactly the same, 100 feet.
And I noticed in the previous decision, they also look for a current lease?
Yes, we have a lease. And as I said, that part of that is the deal is that we rebuild this at our expense and the landowner still owns it. Yes, of course, we have a lease net. Tab three, permission of our landowner, evidence of lease.
That's all the questions I have right now.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Ken, anything?
Yeah, so I'm just, obviously, at the moment, there's quite a bit of disrepair out there. The stockade fence is not intact.
Yeah.
There's a big sign that says, don't come near here, radio frequency. And then there's nothing keeping people from climbing up the tower. So I presume you'd put in a little bit sturdier fencing.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we're going to fix that up for sure. That's, I noticed that it's, it's been, yes, we will fix that.
Is there any thought about adding some shrubs or something around the base?
I mean, there's, there's no room for that on the, on the two sides that face the neighbors. And then the parking lot side, it's a parking lot, it's paved. That's why the solid fence blocks the view. I don't know what the shrubs would be. We don't have the light, the lease rights outside beyond that stockade fence to do anything.
The fence, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, leads me, that's a good segue to the next part, which is, so you're going to have at least during construction, the two towers, and then you'll take one down. Is that?
Absolutely, yeah. That we got to take.
I'm just not totally clear on, on the exact footprints and how they, maybe that's shown on the plan, but I wasn't.
Yeah, if you look at, if you look at sheet, if you look at sheet A1, it shows underneath there very lightly. Well, actually, it doesn't show very well. But basically, if you look at sheet A1, where our equipment pad is supposed to be.
Okay, I sort of see it. Okay, yes. So you're saying where the, that's where the existing tower is?
Yes, and that's the motivation for, to get that out of there because we can't get on air.
Right.
And.
So you'll, so you'll build the, the new tower, and then you'll take the old tower down, and then you'll create the equipment pad?
Right.
Okay.
And it'll be much cleaner. The whole inside of that combo will be cleaned up. The fence will be repaired. It'll be a much cleaner operation. And then it'll be a, a tower that conforms to the current building code.
Right. I get that. All right. Well, I guess. Yeah. And then, will you have signage, similar, you know, radio frequency, beware, kind of stuff like that?
Whatever the FCC requires signage and whatever's required, it'll be small placards like that, whatever these require, yes.
Okay. Those are my immediate questions. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Ed, anything?
I have a couple of questions. Good evening, sir. The, what, you say you're going to not have a generator. What are you going to use for backup power?
We have batteries.
Oh, okay. Because I live about five, about a mile south of the, and we still have terrible service. And I've been very disappointed with five years has gone by. We don't have any improvement.
I know.
I'm anxious to see it start.
Yeah.
What timeframe for, assuming this is approved in the next, well, what, how long is your time before you'll get that thing up and running?
So that, if, if you grant us approval this evening and we wait out the appeal period and we get a building permit, then we have to coordinate with Sprint. See, there's, there's a lot of moving parts in this because Sprint is on there now. Sprint was bought by T-Mobile. So we're already in dialogues with them behind the scenes, of course. We got to coordinate so that all the timing is such that it, the tower gets up, we move Sprint over, the tower comes down. That's all going to be laid out. So we'll have to, we won't start until we know we can get this thing done properly.
Okay, no, that's all I have. I'm looking forward to what happens.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Mary, anything?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. Scott?
Yeah, Mr. Garrick, two things. During your construction and deconstruction procedure, will that all be contained in your leased area? Cranes, workmen?
No, I mean, we're going to have to have permission from the landowner for, you know, what you call a construction easement or the ability to straighten things out in the parking lot. We'll have to coordinate that with the property or to do what we need to do to get things in and up and so forth. But yeah, the, our lease area is simply inside that compound. So physically, yeah, we're going to have to work a little bit at the parking lot, but it would just be for construction, like if there was any kind of construction going on in that building.
Okay, so, so that leads me to my next question. Are we to believe that there are still further negotiations that need to take place to refine this project after it's been approved?
No, no, it's all just logistics discussion behind the scenes. You know, what, when can we start? What if, when Sprint and the landowner may say, well.
And what if those would have fallen apart after the approval of the, the permit?
No, 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 no. Everyone's waiting for this approval to happen again. And then we, but it's just a matter of, you know, coordinating with everyone. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. And Mr. Garrick, you already addressed my concerns about the generator versus battery power. So I understand that. On the plan sheet number A1, there's a little notation for proposed Verizon future equipment. I'm just going to take a guess and say that might be contemplating future technology.
Well, just if capacity is such that this site's getting overwhelmed. See, we always, the company always tries to tweak existing sites first before resorting to building a new one.